Okay, welcome everybody. This is the Conservation Commission of Wellington's Wednesday, July 16th, 2025 meeting. I'm going to call this to order at 7:09. We currently have Laura Rodriguez, Carol Jordan, Nora Jones, and Kathy Demers present. Do I hear, um, let's see, we don't have anybody here that to seat. There's no alternates here to seat. Okay.
Everybody at the beach?
Yeah, well, there was a couple, people had some things pop up, so who knows? They could be at the beach. Maybe we'd all like to be at the beach.
I'd like to think that.
Can I hear a motion to approve the minutes from June 18th?
I make a motion to approve the minutes from June 18th.
Anybody want a second?
I'll second. Just one suggestion on the, the financial report. The budget expenditures of $1,025.68, now rather than saying for saying including, because that, that was just a list of things that had been recently purchased. And they have the 1,025, 1025.68 was total expenditures for the year at that point. So maybe just change four to including.
Okay.
Other than that, I'm happy to second.
Okay. Laura, you got that, those suggested changes? Okay, we'll take our time. Just make sure you're comfortable with that. Any other suggested changes? Okay, so going forward with the suggested changes, all in favor of the minutes as presented with the changes, say aye.
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 Any opposed abstentions? Okay, so moved. All right, uh, present to speak. Uh, Dan, I think we're gonna wait, we're gonna just go down to old business under Fenton Ruby, if you don't mind, and then we'll
That's fine.
have you present a little bit. Uh, there's no one else tonight to present.
Um, Kathy, do you want to do the finance stuff and get that out of the way too?
That would be great. Yeah, sure. If you can do it quickly, that'd be great.
Yeah, um, yeah, I can give you final figures on the, on the 2024-25 budget. Total expenses for the year were $1,176.62, leaving an unexpendited balance of only 323.38.
Okay, all right. I need those numbers again.
I'll, you know what, Laura, I'll send you an email.
That, yeah, okay, that'd be good.
After, after the meeting, I'll send you something. Uh, and then so far this fiscal year, we've spent $60 to renew our membership with Kackawick. Um, I tried to do the membership with Connecticut Land Conservation Council, but they have changed their policy. They voted to not accept it, have members, membership only for land trusts. So since one of, one of the reasons we've been joining that was not only because they were very helpful to us, but also because it gave us a, a reduced rate for attending their conferences. So, um, I spoke with a gentleman who said, well, they're going to have some kind of auxiliary program, uh, or, um, plan for auxiliary organizations, but they have no idea what that plan is going to be, when it will be completed. Um, and I suggested that, and they're changed, they've changed their fiscal year to a calendar fiscal year instead of a, uh, uh, July 1 to June 30, which is typical for municipalities. So, uh, we had a little bit of a discussion about, uh, lack of, of, uh, heads up to conservation commissions that they were changing their rules. So my recommendation is that we wait until the dust settles and see if they finally get their act together and figure out how they're going to treat conservation commissions before we affiliate with them.
Okay.
And I also have reports on ARPA. We spent another almost $300. So we have now spent, um, $1,996.84. In other words, approximately two grand of the 3,500 allotted for ARPA. Um, and Pettix property, um, we've spent $32,302.12. So we're still coming in well under the appropriation figure of 4,200. And I believe the only thing that remains to be spent on that is will be the bronze plaque.
Okay. Carol, can you just, um, uh, give us the numbers for the recent uh, payment that to Becker for the, um, stone?
Yeah, that, that the most recent, um, was a payment to Becker for, I forget what, whatever it was brought the total remediation expenses up to $2,542.
Okay.
And that included that 52612, I think it was. Forgotten what's about, that bill was.
Okay. Yeah, I just want to put it on the record because, um, I had sent you that invoice, but, um, I didn't keep a copy of it. So if you, if you can send Laura maybe just that total for the
Yeah, I'll send, I'll send Laura an email with all of this written out. I'm a little scattered. We're, as we're in the process of, uh, figuring out what we're doing with moving. So, um, it's been a little, little hectic lately.
Understandable. Yeah, definitely. Okay. So moving on to old business, uh, the properties, uh, management, Fenton Ruby Park and Preserve. So, um, I've invited Dan Donahue tonight to talk a little bit more, uh, to us about the history of the property as well as some of the intention of the previous landowners. Um, when this, you know, the town acquired the park. So, so Dan, anything you can shine on, on that one? Great.
Sure, I, um, and I formulated a question that I thought kind of really hits at the heart of, of what's, you know, you're the situation you folks are in. You got a forest management plan and it says to do this and you're wondering, should we do this? So, and my question is, is it necessary to routine, necessary to routinely harvest commercial timber from the park preserve for its purpose to be fulfilled? So that gets right back to the original purpose of the Rubies and the town. Why do we do this? What's the purpose? What's the central purpose of this land in relation to the Wellington community? I think that's a fairly valid question because it gets right to the point of what you're dealing with in terms of this action that somebody else says you have to do in order to be a good steward. So I think that's a fairly reasonable way to get right to the heart of it. It doesn't, it's not too broad. It's specific. Um, so I, I, that helped me think about, um, a couple of things, but probably most importantly, I'd have to say, and I think certainly Carol was, was there at the time and, and understood the implications that, you know, we really need to be, um, stay aware of what the intentions of the Rubies were. So, um, uh, for those who don't know some of the history, it's not going to go into it because it's a long story, but I'll start by saying, Carol knows this, I'll start by saying, the first official, and I'm going to read off of notes because I, I had to do this. Um, the first official proposal to acquire the Ruby land from Clark and Margaret Ruby for the sum of $500,000 was defeated in a referendum. I don't remember the year or the month or anything, but it was, I remember it was defeated for sure. So representing the Wellington Conservation Commission, which I was on at the time, I think I was the chair at the time. I first spoke with Clark Ruby the day after that referendum vote and heard him declare that he would not sell the family land to a developer. So he and I agreed that we would meet informally to discuss possible next steps. So I met with Clark and Margaret on numerous occasions over the next year or so, probably 25 or 26 times. Not always to discuss the issues. Sometimes I'd drive by and I'd see Mr. Ruby up in his, in his lawn chair and I'd stop and we'd talk for 20 minutes about the weather or something, then I'd go on, you know? Um, so I got in the habit of just spending time there and then listening, you know, I spent. So I met with them numerous times. I did a lot of listening to them and I, I wasn't pushing anything. I wasn't pressing. I just, let's talk about it, you know, see what happens. So, you know, I got to know them, you know, reasonably well and got to hear what they had to say and, and nobody else did. So, um, so Mr. Ruby, you know, it was all him, eventually made the amazing offer, jaw dropping offer of $150,000. And the Wellington community proceeded to accept and embrace what it couldn't refuse, a massive gift. So, you know, this is the biggest gift, over a million dollar gift that the town has ever received from anybody. So that's pretty significant in my opinion. Um, they, they could have sold that property for four or five times that if they really wanted to, they didn't. They wanted the town to have it. Not only did they want the town to have it, they didn't want the town to dispose of it. The town can't sell it or convey it to anybody else. They never wanted it commercially developed, even though 40 acres is unrestricted for town use. They didn't want it privately developed in any way. That's why they gave it away to the town essentially. So, um, and then the name, the Fenton Ruby Park and Wildlife Preserve was intentionally chosen by the Rubies after a lot of discussion. Uh, it conveys their dual purposes, a place for both the community of citizens to enjoy and for wildlife to thrive. So I think that, um, I don't know what they would think about this. I have no idea. They've been gone for a long time now. Um, but it, this kind of thing never came up in our conversations, you know? This has happened many times before in land conservation projects that landowners, you know, uh, doing a bargain sale. This is, this is, this is not a bargain sale. This is a gift, you know? But, um, sometimes landowners that are doing the bargain sale say, well, if I'm going to be giving you all this value of property, I'd like to harvest the timber before I convey the property. And then they go ahead and they harvest the timber. Never came up, never discussion of it. And, you know, Mr. Ruby's family was in the lumber business for goodness sakes. So it was not a concern of their part. They were concerned about the town having it. So Mr., you know, Mr. Ruby, he was the pragmatist. He wanted the town to have it and not be able to dispose of it and that the, it would be in a place for the, the people could go forever or whatever. Margaret, she was the romantic and she was all about the wildlife. So her theme was fairly constant, you know, wildlife, wildlife, birds, whatever. So that's how the name came to be. Um, and I think that, uh, you know, what happens in a situation like this is that, um, the way that foresters like myself would typically look at a parcel uh, and determine what to do, uh, to, you know, steward that parcel um, is likely to come into conflict if you're looking at that parcel in a completely different context. You're not looking at that parcel as a distinct property. You're looking at it as part of the larger landscape. So my professional perspective on this, this parcel versus landscape planning and stewardship conflict, uh, is based on, you know, a 40-year work career. You know, my first 20 years was devoted to the management of individual parcels of land, just like that plan portrays. Private, public, and corporate ownerships. I wrote hundreds of management, forest management plans. And I conceived, designed, and supervised 300 to four, somewhere between 300 and 400 commercial timber harvests. So I've done plenty of that kind of work. I know all about it. I'm reasonably good at it when I did it, not anymore. So the next 20 years of my career was devoted to landscape scale land protection for the purposes of biodiversity conservation and wildlife habitat. This is from largely with Norcross Wildlife Foundation and Sanctuary. This involves sanctuary land acquisition, funding the work of other organizations with grants and bridge loans, and partnering with other NGOs to kickstart regional conservation efforts like Mascon Partnership, for example. So all that 20 years of experience gave me a different perspective on the landscape. And so, um, if I apply that, those, you know, those landscape glasses to the park preserve, Fenton Ruby, um, I see this. I see the fact that it occupies a significant stretch of the Fenton River, including its confluence with Stiles Brook and several unnamed tributaries, all of which, you know, collect in Taylor Pond. Um, and Taylor Pond and this complex of wetlands provide watershed, watershed quality protection in addition to their obvious aesthetic and biodiversity habitat values. Uh, secondly, it's a complex landscape, uh, the kind that is frequently revealed when GIS and bioscientists seek to identify places with the highest biodiversity values. And this complexity in this case is based on variety of eco types, uh, elevation, a lot of elevation changes, and a lot of different solar aspects, which tend to provide habitat for a wider variety of species of, of animals and insects and all kinds of things that we don't often think about when we say wildlife. Um, third, it's a relatively isolated area and undisturbed, relatively undisturbed for a fairly long time uh, with substantial forest interior, a condition that frequently correlates with low densities of invasive plants. Um, I've seen this and it, it's, if you have an undisturbed interior forest, it's sort of naturally resists the spread of invasive plants. I know this because I've had, I own acreage in Wellington and I've got invasive plants where I've always had them and I've owned the land for 40 years. So the invasive plants don't charge through the woods, you know, so the, the woods kind of keep them back. So that's notable in, in today's world. Uh, Carol, it was 30 years ago when this all went down, believe it or not, right? Uh, things have changed in 30 years in all kinds of ways, as they always do. And, and one of them has to do with, um, invasive species and their effect on the landscape. That's a very different, uh, very different question now than it was 30 years ago. Lastly, um, it might, it may well be a biodiversity hotspot with future value as part of a network of wildlands. Uh, think, you know, pollinator pathways, but on a much larger scale. So the fact that we don't have, you know, 30,000 acre blocks of land around Connecticut, like they do in other parts of the country, you know, doesn't mean we can't do anything about this need for something that is in its natural state that we can study and is a baseline and is, you know, buffered from the, you know, from the, uh, the ills of the world because they're, it's, it's getting harder and harder to keep that stuff from invading essentially a forest. And one of the ways to do that is to minimize disturbance and logging operations are, particularly shelterwood logging operations, harvests are a big disturbance. That's what they're in, that's what they're doing. They're disturbing the forest to make change. And there's no guarantee how that change is going to turn out. So finally, I'll just say, you know, I just think there's a lot yet to be learned from this landscape. You know, I've retired from the Norcross Foundation and Sanctuary eight years ago, but, um, you know, they're doing work up there now, uh, thanks to some changes in personnel and leadership that they've never done before. And they're finding some very interesting things, uh, simply because nobody's looked before. So there's a lot that could be happening here on this landscape that we just don't even know or appreciate. Uh, we know that Connecticut EP identifies wood turtles as a record of wood turtles having been collected there at some point or another documented. Um, but to my knowledge, no modern, modern surveys have been done to ascertain their current status. And I speak with experience from Norcross that you know, have no idea what could be there. I mean, I am currently stunned to learn some of the things I'm learning coming out of the sanctuary right now. And it's not just me, but it's people that I know that are experienced herpetologists and like, wow, we never expected to see something like this because, you know, most of the landscape has been altered and, uh, in ways. And the sanctuary, most of the sanctuary, um, you know, last piece of land, Mr. Norcross acquired for the sanctuary was 1965.
Wow.
He started in thirties and none of it has been harvested.
That's impressive.
And there's nothing wrong with it. There's not unhealthy. It's the fact that there's no young trees growing in some places. That's the world we live in right now. That's, it's not easy to change that. So I just think there's a, um, I also wanted to mention that there's a, I noticed in the plans and there, there's, there's mentioned the vernal pools. Um, you know, uh, it might be worth looking into something like that to determine what the interrelated habitat activities might be. Those are not isolated habitats that, you know, never exchange with others. So there could be some really, um, impactful and important, uh, species issues going on in that property and we just don't know about it yet. So it might be, you know, maybe the idea behind a management plan is, is more, um, you know, more a discovery based at this point in time and holding off on anything that's, that's sort of proactive in the, in the forest management realm, which is really timber management. Um, and concentrate on those circumstan, think about circumstances where a commercial harvest might be, might be necessary because of what's happened, you know, in a storm or whatever. So, um, so that's it. I just, I kind of wanted to throw that out there. Um, and I'm, you know, I can go on and on, which I, I don't want to do because you got a long meeting, but I, um, that's kind of what I, I put prepared for tonight and I'm happy to answer questions or whatever.
I found a pile about this, this high about all of the, what went on in the whole process of acquiring the Fenton Ruby Park. It was really, really very interesting, all the meetings and people's comments and, and everything that you did, Dan, to make this happen.
Changed my life, Carol. You know, uh, Clark and Margaret Ruby, they're, they were just the best. I, I can't, I can't explain to you what, I mean, maybe you knew them, but they were just amazing people. And, uh, I caught the bug. And so, you know, a few years later is when I went to Norcross and started doing, you know, light and land conservation work primarily, which is really, you know, I caught the bug for conserving land back there. Thanks to the Rubies because they provided, you know, they did all the hard stuff, you know? They provided the, the story and, you know, sometime, uh, you know, I could get into more of the details because there's just wonderful details, you know? Um, and of course they, as you know, and, and others may have forgotten, but, you know, 69 people voted against the idea of acquiring the property for $150,000. But, you know, when they did pass away a few years later, they gave the rest of their estate to the hospital and library and historical society, you know, they were just, were very generous, very, very generous. And, um, so yeah, it was a great experience for me. It, it absolutely changed my life.
Well, that's great. It was a win-win on both sides. That's great. Um, and like you said, it is a gift to the town and continues to be. Um, and that's why we want to be very mindful and cautious about what we move forward to do in terms of anything that could upset that balance. Um, and, you know, I really appreciate having had some time prior to last time's meeting to talk to you and bring that to the commission. Um, because what we ended up doing is, uh, putting things on pause. And basically we voted, um, not to consider any type of harvesting, you know, this year. Um, and we can, you know, think about it. Um, like you said, if, if there's something urgent that comes up, there's some kind of a, a major ice storm or hurricane, whatever, um, you know, or some kind of invasive insect that comes in quickly and, you know, is wiping out oaks or whatever. So we can think about that, um, you know, but meanwhile, think about these other things you've discussed in terms of doing more perhaps to, uh, look into the biodiversity that is there so we can be more aware of, um, the special things that might be going on there that we, that may need some additional protection. You know, whether it might even be things, for example, like moving trails, you know, because we're finding that these trails are cutting through certain things. So.
Yeah, I, yeah, I'd, I'd love to talk to the commission sometime about the trails. The trails are great. I, I walk the trails. Um, I think the Taylor Pond Trail could use some adjusting just because it, it's, it's a constant disturbance to waterfowl. And the nice, one of the nice things about those ponds up there is that they are pretty isolated. And, um, and it is attraction to certain waterfowl that are, you know, wood ducks, for example, that are just not tolerant of people very much at all. So I've walked around that pond in the spring and every, you know, every 20 feet, you know, there's ducks are flushing out of the brush and so that's little things like that, but, um, the, the, um, I think it's, it's very prudent to put a hold on things because the, the management strategy presented in the plan, it's not a one-off. It's not a one-time thing. I mean, it becomes a program that you're in and then you, you, you gotta keep doing it, you know? So that, that would be, I think, very disruptive to the, the principal purposes of the park and preserve and, um, and is, is, is worthy of, of really careful consideration. Um, you know, the, uh, as far as creating early successional habitat, um, that in my opinion should not be a priority in this location because it's more valued for its forest interior conditions. And, um, I don't know if you folks remember the 2011 tornado in Massachusetts?
Yes.
Yeah, it went, it was about a mile wide and it went about 40 miles. So that's, uh, uh, 40 square miles and about 25,000 acres of early successional habitat that was created in a half an hour. And some of that, some of that tornado blew through some Norcross property, which I, you know, had the displeasure of, of working in afterwards. So these things are going to happen on a larger scale and, um, you know, trying to solve these landscape scale issues, managing parcels is, is not going to work. It's not going to work. So better to focus on the things that you can control and the things that are important. Uh, and then be prepared for doing something when, if a catastrophe strikes. That's, that's reasonable, I think.
Yeah, unfortunately, um, you know, we, we kind of started with what traditionally people do with, you know, forest land, you know, is have a forest management plan that was pretty standardized. And maybe we need to think about working with, um, you know, in the future in terms of the management, land management, um, from a broader view than just timber. So.
How would we go about doing studies on, on what, what wildlife we actually have and that kind of thing? Is there a way, way of going about doing that, Dan, instead of?
Yeah, sure. I mean, well, you know, we got the advantage of having the University of Connecticut and Yale University, you know, in the state. And they've always got students that are, you know, and, and other places too, like, uh, Joshua's Trust had somebody from, uh, Central, uh, Central Connecticut State, uh, doing some research on, uh, some Joshua's Trust properties on, um, on mink. Uh, there is the, you know, there's the bio blitz idea. Um, that's not, you know, that's not a cheap thing to do necessarily, but it could be very interesting. I've, and so, and then it would take some discussion to, to hone in on the things that are, are, um, probably considered of, of higher importance nowadays. And, and a lot of that has to do with, um, with amphibians and reptiles. Uh, they're very vulnerable and they don't move very far necessarily. Uh, and, and they're, they're in trouble for all over the place. A place like Fenton Ruby is wonderful because, again, it's isolated. It's not, there's not a lot of traffic there. There's not a lot of development in that part of the town. Uh, I think that has a lot to do with how relatively stable that landscape has been for 30 years. Uh, while every place else I seem to go is just be getting overrun and invasive plants. So, um, there's a, there's a, I can, we can talk about, uh, what steps to take to get into a process where you can start to do this discovery and, um, it could be enlightening for sure.
Well, we've had some, um, students from UConn actually reach out. There's, I think I had mentioned to you earlier about a beaver study that they're doing in terms of water quality. Um, and so they've got, uh, pismeters in several locations, um, along the river and in Taylor Pond.
Oh, good.
And I was just going to tell the commission tonight about two other projects that UConn students are asking us if they can do. So it's, you know, it's great and, um, we welcome that. Yep. Great. Any other questions or comments? Uh, anybody want to? Dan is, um, uh, really truly an amazing role model, um, in terms of passion for conservation and, um, he's, he's a very modest person, but he's had a lot of experience. He's volunteered and worked with Josh's Trust and, um, uh, Connecticut Forest and Parks Association has been very, um, active with them and Norcross. And of course, the Conservation Commission, um, and so really welcome and value your experience. Thank you.
Thank you.
And I think we also need to point out that Dan was instrumental in, in obtaining the first of the Talmage parcels through his contact with Dan Talmage and, um, and also persuading the university to put at least a, um, a 50-year restriction, uh, on the property that adjoins those, our parcels on Mason Road. And so, yeah, we, we
That's a story. That's a story. Oh, boy.
Dealing with the Talmages is very interesting, I found, especially five, five heirs who, uh, well, let's say they didn't all get along.
Well, I'll just never forget Dan, you know, he, uh, great guy. Um, and, uh, uh, the, the original deal for, for Dan's property while he was alive. Um, I, that's my favorite story because I, I worked that out in like a 10-minute phone call with, uh, with the first selectman at the time. And, um, and I got back to Dan, who was, I think, 94 at the time. And I said, Dan, I think we got a deal. Uh, I think we got something going on here. And he, and he was, and his reaction was, oh, well, you know, uh, I've heard this before, you know? I, I'm, I'm not, I'm not in a big hurry, you know, I, I, we'll see what happens. I don't know. I've heard this good topic. We'll see what happens. 94 years old, you know? Ninety-four years old, you know, it's like, but it, it really was, at that point, see, the, the Ruby property, the Fenton Ruby Park and Wildlife Preserve, completely changed the narrative about conservation and open space in the Town of Wellington forever. Forever. Before that, nobody wanted to talk about open space, you know, you got about open space. They thought I was crazy. What have you got nothing but open space in this town? So that really changed everything. And that's thanks to the Rubies, because they made it such an unbelievable, it was a gift. It was a tremendous gift to the town. And I think people got that.
Yeah, definitely. We've had positive support ever since then, when we brought forward any new pieces of property for acquisition. And I, I remember how helpful you were too, when we went for the Knowlton property, which is a large property on Mason Road. And, you know, you, you know, I contacted you and you gave me a lot of suggestions about how to work with landowners on that. So I really appreciate that.
I love, I love to be able to say about the Town of Wellington, that the Town of Wellington protected four hundred acres, and they made money doing it. Because they, they bought the, the Fenton Ruby property for a hundred and fifty, a hundred and fifty thousand dollars, and they sold the North property for two hundred and fifty thousand dollars.
Wow. That's right.
And that money went to the life, you know, so they made money. Never happens, never happens. And, and it was all very grassroots, all very organic, very low-key, you know, not lots of committee meetings, no appraisals or lawyers involved until the very end. It was amazing. It's the kind of thing you can't really do anymore, unfortunately, I think. But it was a great experience, good people.
Yeah, so I'm so grateful that the town, you know, finally accepted that in terms of the referendum. It's interesting, and, and maybe we, we can pick your brain a little bit more. There's a potential parcel in town that's two hundred acres that's on the market right now. And we're going to talk about it tonight. And it's, it's public knowledge, because they've got it listed. It's the King property off of Jared Sparks Road.
Oh, nice. And that's one I've had, sort of had my eye on.
Yeah. And, you know, it'll probably sit there for a while. They won a million dollars for it. But, you know, Bob Shabat and I were speaking to Charlie King today. Actually, we happened to be over at the Senior Center, and we asked if we could go and walk the property and kind of brainstorm a little bit with them about what their family goals are. It's hard, because there's nine people involved, you know, it's a family trust. And I'm sure different people see different things about the property. But, you know, we certainly, the town would certainly have to go for a DEEP grant if we were to pursue that. And we'd have to come up with a pretty significant match, you know, whether or not the family would be agreeable to doing something like the Rubies did, and consider selling it, you know, for a bargain price, because it's.
Yeah, with nine people, that gets complicated, because not everybody's going to be in the same, you know, economic situation. But, yeah, that's, that, that could be tricky. But you gotta, you gotta start somewhere, you know. Yeah.
Yeah. It's, it's a shame, you know, there aren't many large parcels like that left in town. And.
Well, as you know, that's in an area with several other fairly large ownerships, and the Heck property too, which has already been conserved, which I, doesn't, I don't think it butts King, it butts King, but it's close.
It's close, yeah.
It's really close. And there's, you know, the land to the east of there, which is all pretty, pretty wild country. I don't know if any of that will get developed, maybe in the long term, but.
Yeah.
Yeah, you know, one thing that does work for some people is you can get some, when I think about this now, you used to be able to get some really good federal income tax deductions for this kind of thing. But some of that's going to disappear. I suspect that you won't even have, you know, you won't even need to. Or it may not be available as an option anymore. I don't know. But with nine people, that really complicates things. But I guarantee you, not everybody's going to be like, oh, yeah, great, I can get, you know, deduction on my federal income taxes. Several people are like, I don't pay federal income taxes, so that does nothing for me, you know. So that's, it's going to be challenging. But maybe they can agree on portioning some of it, or if it comes to that, I don't know.
Yeah, yeah. Well, we're gonna, we're gonna go out, take a look at it and just see, you know, I wish there was, I don't know, some philanthropic organization that had that kind of bucks, you know, that the town could work with over time. I know, for example, you've helped with bridging in the past when you worked for Norcross, you know, in terms of land trusts and so on, you know, at least, especially when a land sale came up really quickly, and they, they didn't have time to raise money or go for grants right away. But this is, that's a significant amount of money.
Yeah, yeah. The, the Norcross's loan program never provided quite that much, you know. I think, yeah, we never, we never, you know, it was usually two fifty or maybe three hundred fifty thousand dollars. So, you know, the one big organization out there that can fund anything they want to fund is the Conservation Fund. But, you know, they're a pretty big outfit. I used to know people that worked there. I don't, I don't anymore, I don't think. But there's really limited options now when it comes to money, and it's, they forget federal money, that's gone. Of, I'm sure everybody that's got a forest legacy grant that hasn't been finalized is out of luck right now. And, you know, beyond that, it's, it's limited, limited options, really.
Yeah, not enough.
State of Connecticut, state of Connecticut would, you know, even though what the state does is paltry compared to many other states, it's pathetic, the paltry, actually. But they do have a program in it. And, you know, there hasn't been a lot of state grants, open space grants expended in this region, because that's something Joshua's Trust just doesn't do. Whereas other parts of the state, they've done really well with these grants. So that's, that's, that's a shot, as long as the, the Kings can, you know, can wait, you know, are patient enough. But I, they're probably not gonna, that's not a, I don't, I don't think, I haven't looked at that property in quite a while. But it's not a, it's not a highly developable landscape, I don't think, you know.
I don't think so.
But it doesn't mean they can't carve it up and make a mess of it.
Yeah, that's, you know, the concern. It's just too bad the way these larger parcels could, you know, because they, he, he did mention that they've offered to a butters, that if a butters wanted to buy smaller parcels to add on to their own, you know, so they're looking at potential ways to carve it up.
I, I hate to suggest it, you know, if, if you can avoid it, but if, you know, if they can part with the road, if they want to keep the road frontage, and part with the backland, that doesn't, but then the backland doesn't really abut anything up there. So I don't know if that makes a lot of sense, but.
It would have to take a look.
Yeah, it's too bad it's on the market already, you know, but.
Yep, it is too bad. Yep. Well, if anybody wants to join us, we're going to be going out at ten o'clock on Friday. I was going to let people know later in the agenda, but, and Dan, you're welcome to come out too, if you're interested, you know, if it piques your interest. So we're going to meet at Charlie's house at ten. So, all right. Well, thank you again for coming tonight. And you're welcome to stay for the rest of the meeting. That's up to you. But if you want to get going and have the rest of your evening, we understand too.
Okay, well, let's keep in touch, Kathy. And, you know, when something else comes up, I'm not sure I'll be able to see on Friday. But, you know, I'm happy to, I'm always happy to talk about Fenton Ruby Park and Wildlife Preserve. You know, I have a, a connection to the Rubies that will always be there for me. And I, I, I'm happy to represent them i- if, if that's what this comes to, so.
Thank you.
You bet. Nice to see you, Carol.
Nice to see you too, Dan.
Stay well. Good luck with your plans on moving.
Well, yeah, it's time.
All right.
We're gonna miss her. We're gonna miss her. She's, how many years now, Carol? Have you been?
Uh, let's see, December first, nineteen ninety-six was my first appointment to the commission.
Wow.
And that was right after I quit, I turned in my resignation as town treasurer, because I was not happy with any of the six people who were working, running for the Board of Selectmen.
Well, their loss was, was the commission's gain.
Are you going north or south?
Going up in Massachusetts near my daughter and her family.
Nice, very good. Excellent. All right. Good luck.
Thank you.
All right. Take care, folks.
Hey, good night.
Yeah, bye-bye.
All right, moving on. Just a little, a couple of updates on Fenton Ruby Park. Pollinator garden is looking great. We were out there, Laura, Tessa, Gutowski, Ellie Lowell, Chris and myself, to cut up some trees on the trail on Sunday. And the pollinator garden is beautiful. It looks lovely this year. There's lots of butterflies and bees on it. So that's really come into its own. And other than the trees that we cut up, I haven't had any other negative reports from stewards or any concerns out at the park. And as I had mentioned, there was some inquiry in terms of doing some other studies at the park. So we have a master student in the Department of Earth Sciences at UConn. Her name is Allison Rivera. And she was asking if she could collect some sediment cores from the beaver pond, the one that's closest to the park, parking area. What they're doing is looking at how these sediments collect over time and how they affect water quality. So that's something she said it would take like two to three corings that they would do. And they use a special type of a machine that puts a small tube down into the mud in the pond, and it vibrates, so they can go down through multiple layers and then pull out a core. And then they study that core, and it probably shows years and years and years of the sedimentation. And they would be very careful not to do anything close to the dam or to the beaver lodge that's in that pond. So she was just asking for permission that would be, basically be, they'd be out there one day to do that. How, how do folks feel about that?
It's great.
Yeah. Okay. Do we want to make a motion, or do, are we just going to do it by consensus that we think?
That sounds fine.
Okay.
I think it's really, you know, the more we can take advantage, as Dan says, of university students who are interested in, in doing studies like this, the more we benefit from too. And we're contributing something to science.
Absolutely. And, you know, I mean, I really liked Dan's thoughts on looking more into the biodiversity that is at the park. Maybe we can touch base with some department chairs at the Natural Resource Department and let them know that we're interested in hosting more student research at the park. So Laura, is there anything at Eastern that you think would be?
There are. I mean, the, they have a strong environmental earth science department. So, yeah, I think they might be interested also. I mean, I can't speak to specifics, but I have some contacts I could ask.
Okay. And you have master-level students at Eastern? Is it, or is it just?
I'm not, I mean, we have masters in education, yeah, not environmental earth science, master students in education and business, data, data science. There's only, there's only a couple of master's programs, and environmental earth science is not one of them.
Okay. Because I'm, you know, that typically is somebody going for their masters or their doctorate that is looking to do research.
Right. But we do have honor students who do a senior thesis that do research. So there might be, you know, a senior student. But I'll, I'll, I'll ask the department chair.
Okay, thank you. Any other thoughts on that? Anybody else know of anyone that's involved in education or research? Okay. And then the, the second student contacted me. She was doing some studies on skunk cabbage. And she wanted to take a few samples from the park, and she had to do it fairly quickly, because the skunk cabbage itself was going by. And so I gave her permission to go out there and just, she was just going to take a couple samples of, you know, she didn't even really have to ask. Nobody would have ever known, right? But she did, which was, was, you know, I was grateful that she did.
Come over to my place and dig some up.
So she said she would get back to us, you know, in a year or so, when she completes her study. She's collecting skunk cabbage from lots of different places, and doing some analysis. And I'm not quite, you know, sure all the, the details, but. Moving on, the Peddix Sanctuary. Let's see, the fella that was going to look at the rock in terms of being able to mount the plaque, once we purchased the bronze plaque, he finally went out and he took a look at the rock and said that he feels he can do the job. He would have to kind of chisel out and put in some studs. He has to use a special kind of glue to glue in studs to the rock to mount the plaque on. And he said typically it costs about three hundred and twenty five dollars for him to do that. I explained to him, you know, our process of, you know, how we, we had to work with the town finance office. So he would be, you know, willing to provide us with an invoice that we'd get to the board, to the, to the finance office, and then they would mail him a check, and he would be fine with that. And he understands there's no tax involved because of the town status. So.
Yeah, we've got, you know, we, we still have about ninety-seven hundred dollars left of the forty, out of the forty-two thousand appropriations. So I, I don't, I think we can certainly afford to spend money that we need to do the plaque properly.
Okay. Yeah, the plaque itself is going to cost twelve hundred, excuse me, one thousand two hundred fifty dollars. And that was the quote we got from Signs of All Klein. And he would be pretty ready in the next month or so to send us the mock-up. So we would look, we would know how it's going to look, because he can kind of put in some of the effects that we already see on the plaques out there. You know, some of them have kind of a rougher ripley effect, because he's going to try to match it as closely as possible to the other two plaques. So, but he would send us, before he would have any, he would send the order out to have it actually made. He would send us the mock-up, so we could look at it.
Okay.
Okay. Well, do we want to make a motion to move forward on that in terms of the cost of these items? Just so it's in the record?
Because I think, I think just, you know, we have estimates. Maybe you could say estimated cost of products, you know, but I don't think, I don't think we need to be so specific. I think we're, we're a lot fussier about our finances than most boards and committees are. Oh, I forgot, I forgot to say that I, I took, made an executive decision to throw in an extra ninety-four cents for the books, for the, for the library stuff.
I don't know.
One hundred and fifty dollars and ninety-four cents, and the library was going to pick it up. I said, forget it. I'll pay the, we'll take the, pay the full rate for that. So, but I, no, I think it's, it's, you know, it's well within the available funds, Kathy. And, and I think because it's stipulation in the purchase and sales agreement, that it's certainly a justifiable expense. So I think we can, I mean, we're talking about sixteen hundred dollars, maybe. So that's, it's not a lot. And, and I think it's really important to preserve that, and, and, and to, to do it in a fashion that, that is consistent with other, with the other plaques that appear there. So I think, I think we can just say, yes, let's move forward with the plaque, and what, whatever's necessary for mounting it.
Right. So can we make that a motion, Carol?
I'll make that a motion.
Okay.
That we move forward with the bronze plaque, and the necessary expenses to allow it to be mounted at the park entrance.
Right. Can I ask for a second?
I'll second that.
Okay. All right. Any more discussion? In favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, unanimous. Thank you. Let's see. So also for the Peddix property, we need to, we've talked about this before, but we'll just, you know, kind of move forward with it. We need to blaze a trail. We need to update the park brochure, and also the map. And I talked to Jackie, who told me she was not going to be able to come tonight. And she, she can work on the mapping, but she won't be able to do it and probably till September, October, you know, with how busy she is on the farm. So in terms of getting out there and putting, just kind of blazing the trail on the, on the ground, I can try to do that next time we're back from Vermont. So at least we, we start working on that, and it's ready to go for Jackie to map out. So, and if anybody wants to join me out there, I'll let people know when I plan to go out when I'm back. Would that be all right?
Sounds good.
Great. And Carol, I know that you're in the middle of, you know, you weren't expecting.
I wasn't quite expecting things to move along as fast as they are, but.
Yeah. As, in terms of updating the brochure. Yeah. Um, as in terms of updating the brochure uh as well as just the verbiage that's on the website, cuz we don't have anything specific about the pedic sanctuary yet on the website, you know, any just details about, you know, when it was purchased perhaps or a little bit.
Yeah, and it there's, there's not, there's not history the way there was with the, with the original park and um and and um yeah, but I I think it I don't think it's gonna require a lot of of uh language necessarily, other than to, you know, to talk about why, why it was important to the pedicses and and why they want and that we're appreciative of their desire to keep it um apart, make it a part of the park. And uh so I don't think it's gonna be a lot because there's, you know, it is, as I said, they I mean, we could talk about the ponds and 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 why that's a, that's an attractive feature.
Our brochure is um, it's pretty chock a block full now.
I think, I think it might be too all ready for a complete overhaul. I think it's gonna have to be because we'll have to edit or or and or change the format and that kind of thing.
Is that something that you, you're gonna be able to have time to work on? I mean, I don't know what your plans are. Are you going to be once you move, you're out of the area or are you gonna be coming back and forth for a while?
We're gonna be coming back and forth for a while. Um we haven't even thought, we, well, we need to put the house on the market at some point. Um, we're having some work done. Um, but we're, yeah, we'll be going back and forth. We've put down a deposit, but we we won't be signing a contract uh until beginning of August probably. And and after that, we'll be back and forth, um, probably taking some things up. I know.
Is something you wanna take on or would you just rather?
I'd rather pass the torch to somebody else on that.
Do you have um anything that you have digital? You know, that you've got a file for, not, not a paper file, but a digital file with the brochure, any of that information in there? So somebody doesn't have to retype everything?
Oh, yeah, I I'll look and see what I've got. I've got a lot of, a lot of stuff in my records. And I have to admit that I have not gotten around to calling Crog to see about updating the map. One of, one of my problems is that that even though it's the Planning and Zoning Commission and the the Inland Wetlands Commission are the ones who who establish um conservation easements. They have no listing of conservation easements in the Land Use Office. So, so and and because the um town clerks' land records have not been indexed for a number of years, it's very difficult to to do research just to see if, uh, I'm gonna, I'm gonna talk to Mike and see if he recalls anything uh that happened since he's been with the town. But I've, do you know how how long he's been here, Kathy? Do you remember?
At least I'd say five years.
Yeah.
I'm trying to think of when Susan left.
Yeah, the last, yeah, the last year um listing that I did was um as of October one of two thousand sixteen. So it's it's a pretty long time period to research and and um you know, you use, when, when you have an index, you could go to Town of Wellington as the grantee and and look and and you could look up a document and find out whether it was a driveway easement or a drainage easement or a conservation easement or whatever, whatever. But I'm, it's very difficult because nobody's been passing anything on on through the Land Use Department. And that's, then that's a, so the things that we would add at this point would be pedics and um the second Talmage piece and also the easement on loves, but I'm not aware of of anything else.
And I don't think there's anything major. I mean,
I don't think so either.
There could be some small easements along, like, um, you know, Mike might know or we, he can look back because there haven't been really a lot of developments, subdivisions or anything like.
There was a long moratorium and 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 when they, when there was just wasn't any development and they were, there were no, there haven't been any major subdivisions in quite a while. So that's where most of the, most of the conservation easements come in um because they're done as as it was sort of a routine thing to put uh open space or take land or fee in lieu of. Uh, but it's doing the research. I I don't know whether I'll have time for that. Um, and I don't know when I'll be officially changing residents.
Yeah, well, you know, keep us abreast and um if you think you have to pass the torch, just let us know. We have time to work on the open space map. It's not gonna be due until, you know, twenty-seven.
I confess to Peter that I still haven't done anything with all the stuff he dumped on me when he left. Uh, there's a, there's not a lot of it. But the, part of the problem is that I, you know, I couldn't look at things whether we need them or not, but I don't know what's already in the files and how it's been organized and trying, so trying to integrate things. I hope I've still got, but seriously, the the stack of documents and the whole history of the acquisition of of Fenton Ruby Park is really fascinating. And all of the that went into the discussion, discussions back and forth and and people's comments for and again and that kind of thing was really quite interesting. And uh the the whole.
We certainly can archive all of that, you know, at the town office.
It was in our files, but I I I think I put it back, decided I should put it back and I may have put it in a folder behind the the uh the Fenton Ruby Park um uh folder.
Okay, so I wanted to let you know too, if you're looking for the Fenton Ruby Park folder, I have it. And the reason, I'll tell you why, because this is uh my next item that I was gonna just bring up. Um, so we decided not to do any timber harvesting. I had gotten back to Hull, to Austin and let him know, you know, thanked him for all of his time. And he contacted me a few days later to tell me that the uh Dupilcas are thinking of doing a timber harvest. So they would be using the access road uh through Fenton Ruby Park to uh bring the timber in and out and machinery and so on. So I pulled the Fenton Ruby Park uh maps because there's not only the survey, but there was some land swaps between Mr. Ruby and the Dupilcas way back. And I just wanna make sure that when we marked our boundaries, um, that those were those were also noted because
Yeah.
The land swaps were before the, I know, or after the survey that Mr. Ruby did, but the survey was not up to date when they sold the property that the town. But there is, there's a reference in the deed that talks about these land swaps. And there's also a map, a survey map of that. So I just wanted to be sure before Hull starts to do any timber harvesting on the Dupilcas land that um our boundaries are protected. So hold it. So.
Yeah, so, yeah, I don't, and I, I don't you know, we did, I thought, who, I forget who surveyed the boundaries.
It was in the nineteen eighties and then the town bought the property in nineteen ninety-four. But references the nineteen eighty survey minus the, minus the swaps. You know, I mean, if you, in the deed itself, it's got all the boundary um
Of markers and.
Markers and lines and everything, but the survey itself, the original survey of the property is not a hundred percent accurate cuz there was a little bit of a land swap after that.
Isn't that, that's always so interesting.
It was minor. It was, it was less than two acres, but still, you know, we just wanna make sure they're not gonna be cutting on the boundaries of the park.
Yeah.
Yeah. So it's interesting, you know, we thought we were gonna preserve the quietness in the park with but we're still gonna have logging trucks coming through there.
How much land do the Dupilcas have now?
Oh, I forget.
Really, forty or fifty?
Oh, I did talk to Peggy um the other day and um I said, oh, you know, Austin had called me and just let me know. Um, potentially, and they, I don't think they've signed a contract yet, but they were, they've been in discussion. And she said that they wanted to do the timber harvest mostly because they want to make some trails on the property. So it didn't sound like it was a major harvest. So I don't know. So just let me know.
Yeah. Never rains, but it pours.
All right, I'm sorry we're taking so long. Ruby, but it was, it was interesting to listen to Dan. Um, you can see he has a real passion for that. So he's been a wonderful um role model truly in all these years.
Yeah, he's, uh, he's, he's done remarkable about um that that whole deal that he put together that involved the, it was, it was the, the um library property, the the north property. It was a combination of the north property, the first acquisition for, and he was the one that I believe approached Dan Talmage. Or anyway, he was the one who dealt with Dan Talmage who himself was I I think so, I've heard from several sources, was a difficult person to work with and and that that got passed down to his offspring as well, of whom there were five. Yeah. Yeah, and and uh so, yeah, he, uh, and and I think the real coup was that the university had been using that parcel, the Moss Forest tract for research uh forest research, but they had never, they made anything formal. And one of the things that was put together as part of that deal was that the university put a fifty-year um uh restriction on and that it would, the restriction on that land that was only to be used for forest research. Um, and that, of course, who's gonna be around to remember when the fifty years is up? At least they did talk to you, to the university and for doing something that that put restrictions on it so they didn't end up putting another dormitory out in the woods there. Um, so, you know, um, Dan is a rather persuasive person. I, he doesn't talk about it a lot, but um I think that whole relationship that he developed with the Rubies was really, really a good, a good thing. And and it opened the door because the town had no public park land up until that point.
His model of of working slowly with landowners was something that we employed, Peter and Peter Anderson and I employed with the Knowlton family. Um, you know, no pressure, talking to them about what their goals were, you know, listening to the history of the land and you know, and then you have to work, to work with landowners, you have to gain some trust. Um, they have to feel good about what they're going to, you know, be doing. They don't wanna be pressured. So.
It's, it's, it's very tricky and Dan was very good at that. And but but we, the town really owes him a debt of gratitude for everything that he did to to get the ball rolling um and on, on all of the developments, actually. It was funny, we were looking at places um that where we might move in Massachusetts. What we, but but to see one person's so-called cottage and it turned out that she was from Ashford and she was so excited. The poor woman is giving the tour, we're standing and she's going on and on about how she was in the first class of people from Ashford that went to E. O. Smith and how the people from Mansfield were so snotty to the, to the. I was talking to her about how our required the Knowlton property and how Tom Knowlton talked about lying on these erratic when he was supposed to be cutting wood and and stuff like that. She was just so excited to be somebody that knew about Ashford and Wellington.
Well, that, that'll be nice if you move in there. You'll have a little common.
She's gonna be in a different place, but I gotta find, I've not, I gotta get her name, be- because if we, when we do move in, maybe we'll I I might try and make contact with her and go out to lunch or something, but.
Yeah, you'll be able to talk about the northeast corner. So I'm gonna move on here on to the Knowlton Preserve. And um Tom Smith, who's our steward out on Knowlton, said everything looks good out there. Um, I haven't had any, well, Ellie Lowell told me that the last time she was out on the um the uh Split Rock Trail, that was okay, but I don't know about the Talmage Spur. I haven't heard back from the Blans at all. Um, collaborative organizational news and communication, uh Nora, do you wanna give a little update about the scavenger hunt at Fenton Ruby?
Sure thing. Um, it was Heather, myself and Steve. And we waited till about ten after ten and this family emerged from the Taylor Pond Trail. And Steve roped them in. It was a husband, wife and their two beautiful kids. Uh, Steve read the story and we presented the kids with a prize and they were so thrilled with the books. Um, and the, you know, the the little boy, um, he, he received the stuffy that went along with the book. Um, and because the older sister is kind of taking care of him, but it was just sweet to see them. It just, we wish, wish we could get like six or seven kids there um instead of just two, but it worked out really nicely. Steve also offered the parents a book too, so um, they were thrilled. They were thrilled to get, I think the, the little girl chose the journal. And um and then the other, the parents chose the big book. I don't, I forgot, the nature's had a bunch of beautiful pictures, almost like a National Geographic book. So um, they were thrilled and they, they were good sports. I know they probably were tired and wanted to go home, but they were good sports and they sat down. And then they, they did the scavenger hunt and um it was great. It was great.
Maybe they'll talk to their friends and maybe they'll.
Right, and they were from Stafford, they were from Stafford, so they do keep an eye on the offerings in our town. So that's, that's a good thing too.
Yeah.
Now, you wouldn't, you wouldn't believe some of the things that went on. But one of the interesting things about Fenton Ruby was that there were, they were, the deeds were for there, there's a parcel across the street that can be put to other purposes. And they, and they actually, the purchase price was a hundred and fifty thousand and one dollar and the, the property, the across the street was one dollar, but we paid a hundred and fifty for what became the park, the with the idea that we might apply for a state grant. But there were people who, if we get a state grant, that'll be people from outside of Wellington could come. We don't want that. There was an awful lot of that kind of stuff going on at that time, you know? We don't wanna share, but it's, it's really nice to have people coming in from, from, and to, and it's good for the town and I think it's good for the town's image that we have a park that has become well-known in in many quarters as as a great place to walk.
Yeah.
Not just people in this area, but you know, sort of a broader spectrum. And I think that's a wonderful thing. So much for the naysayers. Don't get me started on naysayers.
Thank you, Nora, so much for spending some time out there and helping with that for Heather. Um, I'm, I'd like to get I think Heather had sent the materials out. I don't know if everybody got them for the scavenger hunt. Was very interesting. Um, maybe we can ask Heather to send them out to everybody because if you have grandchildren or know of people with young children, you could use that scavenger hunt with anybody, correct?
Absolutely, a birthday party if you had a wooded, you know, backyard or whatever, you could do it there.
Yeah.
So it would be, yeah, it would be really nice.
So maybe we can um share that with everybody and get it out, um, and maybe even Parks and Rec, you know, it might we might try to replicate it maybe in the future and look, I don't know what happened in terms of um you know, why we didn't get a lot of people to come out. It might have been the day, it was the day after uh July fourth.
Yep.
Yeah, so that might have affected things. Um, summers are hard.
And the other thing is, um, and I think I asked this before, like I don't know if Steve posts things like that at the campground because I think families probably were there and maybe they would have brought their kids.
That's a great idea. Yeah. Yeah. Oh, I like that idea.
I mean, just he put, he puts those flyers out. They're beautiful and just, you know, I'm sure the camp, the people that own the camp, the Moose Meadow, they would be willing to.
Host those. That would be great, yeah.
And they, and the families could just walk down.
Oh, yeah, it's not that far.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Good. All right, uh, let's.
And even at, what's, there's another campground across the way, right? What is it called?
There's the one up on on off of Village Hill.
Right, right. So maybe even there too.
Oh, yeah.
Wilderness Way, I think.
Yeah.
Wilderness, yeah.
Ground and Moose Meadow Campground. Yeah. No, that's a great idea. I mean, it'd be nice to um partner with them on some of these things, especially to try to outreach, like you said, in the summer to children and families.
Some people, I mean, I had families from my classroom. They come here like for a week or they have a camper and they come you know, every other weekend and they're always looking for things to do, so.
Yeah. Huh. Is that, I, I'm, I'm gonna wait for your news to come later. I'll tell you why later. But um I I was gonna say, maybe we can talk to Heather cuz I know she um enjoys doing that outreach with the kids too.
Yeah.
Yeah. Excellent. Okay. Uh, Park and Rec. Uh, Park and Rec Department, we had talked about doing a fall hike to the Pettix property. So I'll continue to work with Rachel on that, um, so we can come up with uh, perhaps something in October to do, you know, so we can uh, showcase the Pettix property. Eastern Connecticut Conservation District, that's the Natchog Healthy Watershed Plan uh, project. Between eight towns, Wellington is included cuz we're in the watershed. And um, I went to the fourth meeting and I've been elected chair of that group as well.
Oh, Kathy.
So.
You need to learn to say no, man.
That's right, that's right. I've got, there's a great group of people there, um, from different towns. So, and it, it all fits somewhat with, with what we're doing, so it's not, it's not gonna be a big, big ask. Um, but if anybody's interested, we're doing some, um, we have the advisory board itself. And then we have work groups that were encouraging, you know, members to think about joining. Um, but also reaching out to any stakeholder in the watershed. So we have a work group for forest health and preservation, a work group for agriculture, one for open space preservation, healthy residential landscapes and septic system uh, work group. So working on things like um, educating uh, landowners about, you know, less lawn, fertilizers, herbicides, you know, preventing um, those kinds of things, pollinator pathways, how to incorporate that, rain gardens, those kinds of things. So that's under Healthy Residential Landscapes and Septic Systems. And then we have another group working on um, riparian corridors. One on cold water stream habitat and connectivity, because we have a lot of headwater streams, particularly, for example, up in um, Wellington and Ashford and Union. That's where the headwaters for the Natchog, the Mount Hope, and for the Fenton. Um, and then the last work group is, is an education work group to work with municipal land use officials. So planning and zoning and inland wetlands. And um, there's a great, great group of people, they're, they have a lot of interest and passion. So if any of these things spark your interest, you know, you're welcome to join. It would probably be a commitment of um, maybe an hour to a month. So. All right, moving on from there. And uh, Bob's not here and Heather's not here. I think last time when we were talking about the three hundredth anniversary in twenty twenty-seven, we talked about some potential ideas. One of them was the scenic roads, looking into maybe having a scenic road designated. And I think Heather and Bob said that they would look into that, but uh, I don't have any report back on that. Uh, C, support for farmland preservation. Jackie, I talked to her and she said she, she has to make those final edits, but she probably won't be able to do it till September. So we'll think about moving that, the ordinances forward to the Board of Selectmen in the fall, after those edits are done.
I, to just table, table that until September?
Yeah, yep. Town development. Um, Bob's not here to report back on planning and zoning. I don't have any other updates from the other boards except for E D C, the Economic Development Commission. Uh, in reading their minutes, they are um, going to incorporate uh, some ideas about the agriculture tourism. You know, we had some feedback about that part of their, their strategic plan. And they're going to put that in as one of their potential projects, you know, looking into agro uh, tourism. So it'd be nice if we could think about having some type of an agricultural commission in town. You know, a working group of people that have some type of agriculture products. Um, and maybe we can talk to Jackie about that, something she might consider uh, working on, maybe in the fall and the winter, when she's not as busy. Town development, we're finished with that. Open space opportunities, I mentioned um, the King property. So I won't go into any further information about that until we um, take a walk with the landowner.
May I ask one question? So, um, and I may have missed this cuz I've late to the meeting, um, what's going on, on, off of Lisker Road? Um, John Patton is clearing land, so we've had trucks up and down?
Oh, I don't know. Um, Lisker Road?
That's my road. So the, at, at the top, it's a cul-de-sac and they're driving in, so they're behind the campground. And they've been working for about three, it's probably the third week, and they're hauling some large trees out of there.
Oh, really? I will, I will mention that to my spouse, because uh, I would be, if, if, if they're, I think that, that um, Inland Wetlands has to review all, uh, and give approval. And get, and people keep preventing them from harvesting, but they can control it and in terms of what, uh, how it affects uh, wetlands and that sort of thing. So um, I will mention that, uh.
Oh, it's, it's, the, the forester stopped by, gave us his card. Um, and then it's just been, it's been like non-stop. So they're, they're driving up at like four thirty in the morning. Um, workers, and you can hear them at five o'clock. And they're just bringing a lot of lumber out of there, so I didn't know, I didn't know if anybody had heard Bob, probably, maybe, but.
I don't know, but, yeah.
Like, like Carol, Carol mentioned, it's inland wetlands, not planning and zoning, that proves the application. But forestry is typically considered to be an as-of-right activity.
So all they can do is make sure that it does, it's done in a way that doesn't damage the environment is about basically all they can control. Because Kathy said, people have the right to, to harvest land, but um, I, but I'm interested to know, you know? I'll, I'll check with Mike too.
Yeah, I'm interested in just, you know, wondering what's going on, what's gonna happen.
Yeah, oh, you mean in terms of if he's planning to do something once he does the timber harvest, because?
Develop, yeah, developing, I mean, it's a lot.
Yeah, well, I'll just tell you this, there's um, there's been a lot of timber harvesting in town, some of it on their other properties. And they may not necessarily be planning to do any specific development or sale, because that's typically, they um, have not been selling a lot of their land. Um, Mr. Becker, and when he passed away, I think some of that land went to his daughter. And, and Diane already owned a lot in town. So they may just be, because the market might be really hot right now.
Right, 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 yeah, okay. I'm, I'm just curious, I didn't mean to get us off track.
No, that's okay, but it, but it, uh, you know, it's um.
But I, I will. Yeah, I will say this, um, the hours of operation might be something that Inland Wetlands does have control over. And so if they're going in and out of there that early in the morning and interrupting people's, you know, sleep or whatever, um, you have a legitimate.
Yeah, it's the work, it's the workforce going up in their private trucks.
Yeah.
Do you know what company is, is doing the harvest?
I do not know.
Not Hall, is it?
What's that?
It's not Hall, is it?
Not Hall. I can find that out.
Did, did the forester who dropped by just wanted to inform you that they were gonna be working up there?
Yes, yes. They, they crushed, they crushed the guardrail at the end of the street too.
Uh, oh, really?
I mean, there's, there's some big trucks going down here, so.
I mean, that's town, that's town.
Mm-hmm.
Hmm, yeah, belongs to the town.
Actually, yeah, Nora, it might make sense for you just to, if, on a Monday, to give a call to the, to the land use office and see if you can catch Mike Domato.
And see what's going on.
Yeah, and, and mention to him what you've observed and see if he's aware of it.
Yeah, I mean, it's.
But I don't think it's, I don't think it's come up on the agenda of, of any Inland Wetlands meetings.
Yeah.
It might have, Carol, that's a big property and it may not have been, it, I'm sure that they went through Inland Wetlands. But I mean, you check with them, check it out with Dave.
Yeah, I, I, cuz usually, you know, Dave and I talk about what, what, you know, what's on their agenda and, um, and I, you know, we share emails, so, um, but I, I'll, I'll, uh, I would, I think it's worth following, would be worth following both Mike Domato to see what, whether they're aware of what's going on.
All right. Thank you, sorry.
I wasn't there to ask, anyway.
Those, it's um, it's important for us to be kind of aware of what's going on too. As we discussed when we talked about Fenton Ruby and the timber harvest, there's a lot of timber harvesting going on in town.
Well, and then that property, the, the um, Jared Sparks property too is up that way, so. You know, we've been trying to get in contact with them, or you have been trying to get in contact with them, and that's, that's right around there where that's happening, so.
So that's in that same area, there would be a butter?
We used to be able to, and I know you weren't supposed to, but we used to be able, go to the cul-de-sac and drive through up to Jared Sparks, where that property is, the Jared Sparks property.
Okay, yeah, there's an old road through there.
Yes, yep.
Okay.
I mean, we're talking thirty years ago.
Yeah. But it was, I think it was an old town road years ago.
Yeah, yeah.
It was, yeah. Okay, uh, no other open space opportunities that I'm aware of, anything anybody else is aware of in coming up? Uh, Wellington Wire, Laura had written an article and submitted it, but I don't think that I've seen the Wellington Wire come out yet.
Wellington Wire yet.
Well, it's a good thing that what you wrote about the topic could be any.
Could be anytime, yeah.
Yeah, that's good. Uh, let's see, communications, I just have one thing to report. I did receive a letter from the town of Tallent. It's uh, called an early notice for a potential bridge replacement on South River Road. So it's the big bridge over the Willimantic River.
Oh.
In seventy-four. So uh, they have to notify Conservation Commission, Planning and Zoning, and Inland Wetlands. This is just an early notice. They're not a hundred percent if they're gonna move forward with it. If they do, the design would be in twenty twenty-five, and then construction would start somewhere around twenty twenty-seven or twenty twenty-eight. And they're just.
So near the penny, the, near the, the.
Flat Penny.
Is it near there? They, I thought they just replaced that.
Yeah, well, this one says South River Road, so where would that one be? Maybe I'm wrong.
I don't know, no, I think.
Where's South River Road?
South River Road, I think is the one, if you go up past the Flat Penny and turn left, I think that's South River Road.
That's what I thought too.
Yeah.
That's in Tallent, right? That's, yeah.
But maybe the, is there a small bridge there?
There might, oh, there might be a small bridge there.
Yeah, I, I don't know, um, I'll, I'll, that's again, that, I would have, would have thought that uh, they'd be in communication with Inland Wetlands about that one also.
They might have gotten the same notice, Carol. It's not, it's not a go. It's like.
Yeah, it's early, early days, yeah.
Yeah, they're just looking for comments, like if any of the commissions have any concerns, potential concerns about, you know, the habitat or wetlands and things like that. They have an opportunity before they get too far down the road uh, to make some comments. So. Um, open space and natural resource mapping, that's gonna, we're gonna table that for now.
Yeah, and I, I'll, I'll give Krag a call tomorrow.
Okay, Carol, I'm gonna hold you to that.
Maybe I shouldn't, well, I've got one day before my family descends on us on Friday. Oh.
If you hear anything, let me know.
Our, our, our neighbors just agreed, said he would trim our shrubs, he did a terrible job. Now we're gonna have to landscape the front of the house. My danger got not get off to a real good start.
Don't put anything more on your plate, Carol. I'll take care of following up with Krag, really, you, you've got a lot.
Actually, the, the only things we have are, would be easy to add, because with the, with the, um, with the pedics and uh, Talmage things, we ju, it's just a matter of changing the color on the map to show that it's, belongs to the town of Wellington now. And, and as you know, the easement on Love's is basically draw a line X distance up from the river. And that's, that's what the, that is. But, so I, I might, I should be able to do that kind of stuff and, and um, I, as I said, I'm not sure, I think we will, we'll officially change our place of residence until we've got all our furniture moved.
Okay, sounds like a good plan.
We're still trying to figure out what's gonna fit and what's not gonna fit. Do we wanna paint, do we not wanna paint the walls? What we're thinking about this is, one of the things that comes with this is no, no, no need to do indoor maintenance, outdoor maintenance. We get two meals a day and um, but a monthly, pay a monthly fee and get all kinds of, you know, all their utilities paid and all that kind of stuff, so. You know, we're kind of looking forward to actually not having responsibilities and be able to do, kick back and just enjoy life.
Yeah, for sure.
And our family, cuz the kids are, and Kathy's twenty-five minutes away, the kid's school, one of the kids' schools is even closer, so. You know, it's.
Sounds good.
Yeah, and we're looking at, at people even older than us who have no plan. And you get to a certain stage in life when you really need to start thinking about that kind of thing, and we're there.
Yeah.
Sure.
Yeah.
We've got, I know people who are ten years older who have no plan, so. Even though one of the, you know, one of the partners is in a nurse, is in a rehab facility right now.
Yeah, well, we, we really thank you for all your work and uh, we'll, we'll hope you can hang in there with us a little longer.
Yeah, I'll, I'll be back and forth for.
Which brings up my segue to membership. Um, we do have one vacancy, as you guys know. So keep in mind, you know, if you know of anybody that might be interested in just coming to a meeting, just to kind of see what we do.
Yeah, that's one more alternate, alternate va- vacancy at this point.
Correct, yes, yeah. And then under new business, I had put um, update the Conservation Commission mission statement. And the reason um, that's not posted on our website, our mission statement. The only thing that needs updating is just to add the Pedic Sanctuary to it, because we have, one of the missions is to manage the Fenton Ruby Park and Wildlife Preserve, which includes the Drabney Sanctuary, so we can edit it to say the Drabney and Pedics.
Pedic Sanctuary, plural, yeah.
Yeah, so I'd be happy to do that on the website, it's pretty easy.
Yeah.
Okay. And anything else, any other new business people wanted to bring up tonight?
Um, I'm coming out of retirement. And, yeah, tell me, tell me if I'm crazy here, Laura.
Yes.
Yes?
Yeah.
I don't know, I haven't retired yet, so. Mark, Mark and I have been uh, offered teaching positions on Black Island for a year.
Oh, that's cool.
That sounds like.
It's, it's going to be interesting, it's gonna be fun. Um, one of his classes, I was telling Kathy, one of his classes will have four students, it's a K twelve building. And I will teach three social studies classes. So.
That sounds like fun.
So it does, it sounds like fun. Um, Mark has a history there, he had a business there for twelve years, so we know people out there and um, you know, we spend time out there and it's a, it's a great place and.
That's great.
I thi, I think the winters are gonna be tough. But, uh, it'll be okay. It'll be, it'll be an adventure.
Yeah.
Does it include housing? Like, how does housing work for you? There's a network of people, uh, islanders that kind of search for them. So right now, we have a place, we're just waiting for the lease. Um, so we do, we have to rent. Um, and it's just, uh, people offer up their houses because they know it's hard to get teachers out there for the whole year, so. We're excited, I mean nervous, and you know, so it'll be interesting. The, the paperwork uh, that we have to do compared to the paperwork that I did thirty-five years ago. Fingerprinting and uploading your passport, oh my gosh, it's crazy.
Passport, wow.
I, I don't know, Laura, if when you went to East Con, Eastern, if you had to do all that stuff, it's just nuts.
Well, in the past, is that like a Homeland Security thing?
Yes.
I had to do that just this year for the Unite program at Yukon that I was doing. And I was like, what is this?
Right.
You know, it was like Homeland Security, it was like, whoa.
It's crazy, it's crazy, so we, we have to get fingerprinted, of course. We, we tried to get it uh, done last week out there, we took a special trip out to see the school, or to get it inside the school. And they were like, oh, well, we don't have anybody to do it right now. Well, can we make an appointment? Well, no, you can't. And the president's son was out there that weekend, so they were um, high on security um, all over the island because Eric Trump was there. Like, please, please.
Yeah.
Just crazy, anyway. That's, that's where we are going in September, till June.
Okay, it's good. That is very, that is very cool.
Yeah. I'm excited.
I mean, when you said out of retirement, I think you're just kind of back to like the sort of school that you've been doing.
Well, I got, I got off, I got offered a long-term sub position there and uh. And I'd be doing the same thing I was doing when I retired and I was, I was close to doing that, I said I'd do it till January. And then this came up, um, friends called us and said they, we need teachers out here. And I was like, oh, this makes sense, this is, this is what we need to do right now.
Yeah, yeah, that's great.
This is kind of like you, Carol, right? Time, time to do that.
Yeah, well, it's, but I'm a, a little bit older than you are, but.
Yeah, but, I know, this is kind of like, this is kind of a once-in-a-lifetime kind of thing too, though.
Sure, that's, that's good, it's an interesting place to live and.
And we can, we can continue to collect our pensions and we get paid. A pretty, a, a, a lot more money than we are making here in Connecticut.
Wow.
So, yeah.
Yeah, if they, 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 they really have to do that in order to get teachers, I'm sure.
Yes.
You have to pay, pay well, yeah. Well, well, good, good luck and I.
I know, and good luck to you, and I hope Bob's okay, hope Bob's okay.
Yeah, we're, we're still recording, so we probably.
Okay.
You know, be careful with personal information, but um, yeah, he's doing fine.
Good, 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 good.
So, yeah, um, and you're gonna stay with us on the commission, you'd just be out of, out of the area at times, so.
Yeah, yeah, and if I unable to make the meetings, hopefully, you can let me know, like, if you're really tight, but.
Sure.
You know, we're gonna be, I mean, it's gonna be new curriculum for me, so.
Yeah.
I know my, my, I think my term is up in uh, December, so.
Oh, it is? I forget.
I think so.
Yeah, do you think you'd wanna still re-up with the commission?
I'm not sure, I don't know where.
Think about it.
I have to think about it.
Okay.
All right, so, yeah, so keep me posted, um, I know. We're not getting a lot of people showing up for the meetings, but maybe, you know. I'll be able to jump on.
Okay, thanks, appreciate it. All right, well.
Now, one, one caveat is, I don't know how long it's gonna take us to get set up with, with computer and all that stuff too, so.
Yeah, understand.
Up in the air, and.
Yeah, yeah, we'll play it, we'll play it by ear. We don't have a choice.
Well, you know, it just, it just. I, I, our son-in-law did a lot of research on places that were close to them. And said, you know, you guys need to have a plan, and we turn, we turn eighty-five in November and, yeah, it is time to have a plan.
Yeah.
When we had no, have friends who were ninety-five and have no plan. And uh, our friend, well, then even no March Brown, Marjorie Lynn Brown, and March turns ninety-five in November. And she's presently at Mansfield Rehab because she fell.
Carol, we're on, we're being recorded because we haven't ended our meeting, so, yeah, yeah, you just want to be careful. Okay, so why don't we end the meeting? Uh, do I hear a motion to adjourn?
I will make a motion, I have a friend that's leaving my house right now, so I want to say goodbye to him.
Okay, very good, all right.
I make a motion.
You should have stopped me sooner, no worries.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, so moved, so let me at least stop recording here.
Was there a second?
All right.
I'm gonna say goodbye.
I'll second it, Laura.